This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the Monterey Slack Board at five P M on April eighth. We have all three members of the board present here in town hall. Um, and we're just gonna get right into business. Um, we have the earth for Google permit for try on construction. Are there any questions before we go ahead?
Other than that?
I sort of vaguely remember that last year released the last one, the supposedly was the last one, but maybe it isn't.
Um, I think this, I vaguely, again vaguely know or I'm aware that this might kind of be the last one, maybe the year after that during the process.
Okay.
Wrapping it up.
Fitting it up, okay.
Um, if you go up there, you can see uh the upper portion, that is woodchicks now instead of gravel and it's slowly working its way down. But the compound thing, as far as I understand, it did actually hold up that whole process last year.
What the?
Compound, yeah.
Well, they held up.
Question, are you surprised?
There's a small area at the bottom that collects water.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so it was put on pause to determine.
Sign this.
Any other questions? No, all right, um, all.
All the favor?
Go on approving the earth removal permit.
So, fine.
Aye. You mean, that's approval? That will go to back to them as well as to the a few other offices. Okay. Frank, do you want to give us an update on the school lockdown?
Yeah. It was really the chief of police speaking at um at the meeting. Sheffield called it, but he was the main person speaking. Said it was not a false alarm, it wasn't manifest written and it was shared, it was his word horrific. It did not go well at the school at all. The school did not follow procedures for lockdown, a lot of disinformation was a problem. Some teachers did not follow or know the procedures. Some teachers ignored the notices and warnings. He used words like it was awful, unprofessional. Um, since then, the school has recognized the failure, they agreed to the Sandy Hook procedures for lockdown. In each room, there already is a manual on what you do, all the different phone numbers and things like that, there was a lockdown. There's some physical work that needs to be done for the building to meet the needs to give them up to standard. And currently, there's no resource officer in the um school, so they're rotating police officers through there during the tag. The school board said they're gonna put a police officer in the budget for next year. But he's a little, my word, suspect because apparently, you know, I guess the police force and Sheffield Union. And they they've never called him and asked him, what's the salary gotta be for starting resource officer? They had a resource officer, but the person didn't want to take the test and be recertified, so they lost it. So his major concern is that by the end of the summer, everything will be forgotten. And that he's asking the different townships to go to their school board members and make ask them to make their safety priority. He said there's been other incidents in school from fights, shared porn. You know, he says it's a typical high school, but he had one example like some girl had a fight in the hallway or in the stairwell to the point she was bloody. And then her mother brought her up to the pre up to the police station and it was never shared with them despite the school melon. And you know, um, I don't know enough about the school to say yea or nay, but uh you know, someone said that they're in the meeting, they're too worried about their image.
About their what?
Image.
Uh. Um. Did the person who wrote the manifesto get?
He's not in the school, that that we did not go, he's not there. But he said it was horrific.
What was written was terrible, but did they find the person?
Yeah, they did and they had isolated the person.
Okay.
But they were following procedures when you see this, the first part is to isolate, do lockdown and do check, go through the procedures. So, um, people may reach out to us.
Kim, yeah.
I'll reach out to them.
You need to contact them?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
It's not a shock. And we agreed to be the first week of June. He's gonna give us an update on what they've done. There's cause there's in between some of the classrooms, there's doors between the classrooms that don't, they're not the hallway door and they're supposed to be locked in between these all these doors and there's no lock. So if you got in one classroom, you could, he said you could go down several classrooms. But not that they take all of them.
That's not good.
I can tell you though, if you think about living in one of those goings on like daily use, having all those doors locked becomes a nightmare of a different kind in a type every day.
Yeah, but they wanted so you could just lock it, not necessarily keep it.
Keep it locked, but have a lock.
And if you go into a lockdown procedure, you know.
You can isolate the rooms.
You you shut the shade, you block the door, you go to a corner, you know.
But I have a question too, related. Uh, I think very, very related. When I was in high school, was around the time of Sandy Hook and other mass casualties at schools, right? And everything.
Everything went out there, isn't it all the time? Because there were numerous mass casualties in twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
So based on like it has it happened as an evidence.
No, I'm I just, but I'm telling you, there were, it was actively used to tank, right?
Yeah. Right.
When my parents were in high school, it wasn't really a thing, right?
Right.
So it was, it was happening and everything changed. And I distinctly remember that everything about lockdowns changed at one point when I was in high school from hide in a corner and and close all the blinds to run out of the school.
Well, there was a.
Is, are there two different kinds of lockdown?
Uh, there was one, one, one time the school procedure was to create chaos, they said. They got in the way of that, they don't do that now. He said, yeah, he said one thing at one time was create chaos, you know.
Oh, yeah? That's what we were taught.
To run, throw books, do things like that, whatever you have to do to survive. But he said that's not the procedure. He said that the Sandy Hook procedure is pretty well the end of school standard now. He said that under the federal law, you have to have nine fire drills a year in a school year, but you don't have any lockdown requirements. So.
But I remember, I remember testing on, uh, and it was at Mount Everest, so it's, you know, it was relevant a few years ago, but I think kind of relevant in the conversation, we had different drills where they were either lockdown drills or even drills where they would take us all to Berkshire School, which is like a backup area. But I, I don't know, I just want.
What did you, what just, what he said there?
It was like an evacuation drill, like if maybe there's a bomb threat to get everyone out of the building and use.
Okay.
So there were.
So it was a logistical kind of drill.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, and I just wonder with the school shooting, I thought, I thought that things had changed because there were these long shootings that lasted twenty, thirty, forty minutes and they're like, people are kind of sitting ducks hiding in the corner of a classroom as opposed to just getting everyone out in the first five or ten minutes.
He didn't really get into it, but you know, the other thing is a lot of these schools that there's been the automatic or semi-automatic weapons.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm not that close to it, but.
I mean, I think that's the thing, we have tried about a, an automatic weapon or a, you know, a assault rifle-y type weapon. A bunch of people running in a crowd, they're all sitting ducks. You shoot into that crowd and you're gonna hit someone with every single shot. And if you think about kids running through a hallway to get outside, unless they're literally jumping out the windows and the person is inside. I, I don't know anything about this, I just.
I think they, I think they changed it a little bit because from what I've read in the past, the, the response time to these is significantly less than what it used to, it were from, you know, ten minutes, twelve minutes, sometimes less. So that, and I think a lot of these um shootings and all that sort of stuff are a lot shorter than what they used to think. So the, the staying in one location is making more sense or everything changed now, but. But in this kind, in this situation, this was just a manifesto that somebody had written and they had shared and had shared it and everybody kind of shared it and ended up, the, the school district ended up knowing about it. That's when they went into the school and isolated the person. So it hadn't gotten to the point of anything happening, but.
But you don't know.
But you don't know, so that's why they isolated it.
Yeah.
And I guess they should have done the lockdown anyway, when you're supposed to.
So he says the streets are long, so it was hard to do.
And, and it, they kind of did, but didn't go very well?
No, it certainly didn't. He didn't make sure, man.
Was there someone from the school at the meeting?
No.
All right, uh, so you'll be in touch with Kim?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. Potential tax abatements?
Well, you saw the email, I don't, you know, I've had that person ask me and they wanted to write the slackboard, so I said, well, by meeting, we can put it on the agenda. My feeling is, you know, I don't know enough about the deal, I don't think you can do it based on age, it'd have to be based on income. But, you know, we haven't even gotten past the budget. Overrun, so I don't, I think it's kind of premature, but I think people are out there talking about it.
I um, I actually, uh, before I got that from Frank, um, after the fire department meeting, I went and met with Don Lawson to find out what options there were for tax abatements. And according to Don, really the only option the town has would be for senior tax abatements, which are already available to people. And he said that very few people usually take advantage of them because the requirements to get one are quite, uh, I guess I should use the word homeless and uh pretty off putting to a lot of people. Um, there, you have to provide a lot of documentation regarding your assets um to seek one, you have to do it every year.
Oh.
Yeah. So he says that there are some people who seek them, but it's not a lot of people. And usually when people come and inquire, uh, they, they don't receive because it's too obvious. Um, I, I think that's a state requirement, so I don't know. According to Don, that's really the only thing the town has the option to offer. Whether there's someone else that might be able to tell us something different.
There are, aren't there veterans abatements? Yeah, there are some, I think some, I think those, but not many discretionary of the town, because there's.
Exactly.
And I, I think there's something in the seasonal communities uh act that, you know, there's some exemptions there. It can, I can't remember what they are, but they're still working on that from what I understand, I'm trying to figure that out. I'm just trying to just look, but I thought there was something that was in there in general terms about tax abatements if you're a seasonal community, but I can't remember what else about.
I think it's also tough because as much, as much as you'd like to give abatements to people who would use it, we have a system that has, is not necessarily fair, but it's a system that is in its own calculations uh treats people equally. And to start changing that, obviously some people pay less than other people pay more.
That's right, yeah, maybe a little somewhere.
So.
Cost of going.
Yeah, so, so there is something in the seasonal communities, I don't think it's been, um, you know, in in stone, where you can increase the property tax exemptions for year-round residents. But I don't know what that percentage is, it's just.
Property, I wonder if that's real estate or property, I think it's probably personal, it's real estate, not personal property?
Real estate. Yeah. So you have exemption on that, obviously, whether you're lowering your tax, tax.
For them, they embrace it or none.
Will you look into it?
Well, I think we should be, yeah.
Definitely.
Well, I asked as much.
Yeah.
Um. So moving on to the annual town meeting warrant draft. Let's see, look, so.
So I have one thing on the budget, budget goes with the warrant article.
Yeah.
So after a conversation with Donna um about pro two and a half and a conversation with Roger. In order to separate the full-time fire department from the rest of the budget. Um, it seems like the most prudent thing to do is to have the regular budget include the a compensation line that's sort of the pre FY twenty five plus sum. And then to put the majority of the compensation budget and health insurance amount for the full-time department into the warrant article directly with an amount. And I also, I don't know which version of this document yet, continue to.
Okay.
Um. I have language that I took from the D L S document that I then ran by Donna, you have it now because I sent it to her. Um, to replace article, I guess, six. Yeah.
Exactly.
I was, I was numbering them and then I looked at this one and I'm like, that, I'm not sure what the future of it is, so I'm shocked.
Yeah. It's article five plus one.
Article six. Article twenty.
Yeah.
They're all articles twenty.
They're all article twenty. Um, with the new wording.
Yeah, so I.
Do you want to read it?
I feel like I completely screwed up. I'm glad that we got something on the ballot, but I didn't fully understand the proposition that override.
I still, and I've read it like five times and talked to eight different people.
So I think based on my new and developing understanding, that's how I think I'll assess.
Hmm. I did after the back and forth on email between with Steve and Don, I also double-checked with Donna concerning whether or not the override would directly change the actual tax levy rather than the levy limit, and the answer is no. The tax levy is determined by the appropriation, not by the um pro two.
You know what's interesting that Rod and I were just looking at before the meeting, though, is you only end up at the end of the day with the override of what you spend. So if we set aside, what is it, four hundred and twelve? Did you put that?
I think so, yes.
So if we spend, we're gonna keep track with the accounting, if we end up spending three hundred and fifty, then three hundred and fifty gets actually added the following year to the override, to the levy limit, levy ceiling.
It, it seems like having read the D L S thing, I have a slightly different take on it.
Yeah.
Was that.
We already.
I know, I know, that I, I had, I read all the way through all the contingency stuff till I thought I was gonna scream.
Pretty much all the hours.
But I know, my impression was that what they're saying in that language is that, let's say, I'm gonna use different amounts than ours, because they'll be similar. Let's say we asked for a million dollars in the override, but the actual budget for this year used two hundred and fifty thousand. That two hundred and fifty thousand would be what we raised in the tax levy for that fiscal year. That means that the additional seven hundred and fifty thousand goes into our levy limit, but is no longer allocated explicitly from the fire department. So the one-year thing seems to apply to the specificity of the thing that you've asked for. Right, but then the rest rolls over, it's weird, right?
Can you show Susan that or the highlighted part?
So it says here, total appropriations for the year are less than the stated amount. And the community may only increase its levy limit by the amount actually appropriated.
But read the next one.
The additional funds raised by, rate, the additional funds raised by the override, which are funds.
Er, earmarked for the slated only in the first fiscal year.
No, those are the monies that are below what you're, so I think, and I asked Donna.
Right.
I said, so does this mean that we would have to come back for another override?
Next she said.
And she said, yes.
Then what?
So basically, I mean, I think, Susan, the premise was just wrong, we all started on a false premise that we should go for one.
Yeah. Right. Right.
And that just was basically not true.
And you can't do it. Right.
And I think, other than that, everyone's done their job.
Right.
There was just a misconception that was never corrected, that you just go for one year and you can only go for one year and that's how it works. So.
You actually can do local year, but you don't specifically say they're multiple years, but it's, it's later in this thing.
Yeah. So probably, other than it's gonna say one point one in a couple of places, everything is like good and it's good that you did this article and everything's good.
Okay.
Other than, other than.
I, I still hate the fact that I got that wrong.
Well, we all.
But whatever.
We were all sitting here and.
I am, we all got it wrong, but.
It's complicated and.
It's, I only myself were talking.
Okay, can't you change that one point one to?
Nope, it's into the town clerk.
Oh, I had thirty-five days before, I wish that we could. I, I have been having fire preacher's remorse since the day after.
Oh, you can't.
So that's what it sounds like, so we give in, we ask for a one point one billion and it goes.
So you confirm that with Donna?
Yeah, yeah, I asked, I asked her about that, I said, we would have to go back for another override following year, and she said, yes.
Okay. All right, I, I should have highlighted the.
Yeah.
But anyway, so you have the language, you wanted to read it to me?
But then, so, and then just to follow up.
Hmm.
So if we get our four, we, let's say we approve four hundred.
Right.
And then we spend three fifty. And then.
We spent that or we appropriated it?
And then we spend three fifty. Yeah, that's the only thing I don't understand, is spending versus appro, maybe it doesn't matter how much you actually spend.
I think it's how much you actually approved for the budget.
Yeah.
Right, the actual appropriation that.
Yeah. But then what's the surplus, just the difference between the ballot question and then appropriation, yeah, it's.
I think so, that's what, yeah, it's.
So the levy limit will increase by that amount.
Right.
So it actually isn't horrible.
And it, no, and it, it isn't horrible, the only thing that's horrible about it is that people voting on the ballot that maybe didn't come to town meetings or didn't come to any of the meetings or read any of the stuff may believe that we're actually gonna raise the taxes that.
Well, it's gonna be based on that question, it's gonna be really hard to tell people that's not what we're, I know.
I know, which is why I've been having remorse since the day after, right?
It's gonna be interesting to say, I know it says they were asking to actually one point one million, but we're not.
So she did point out that with this double structure of having one amount in the regular budget line and the other amount in there, I'm obviously gonna have to say something at town meeting to explain why the amount is split, like, well, that's obvious.
Yeah.
But yes, I agree with her, I, I do. Um. I mean, I feel like it's clearer here that that's what we're actually asking for, because I'm asking for that amount right from there, it's just weird that on the ballot question, it's a different amount.
So only quick question.
Yeah.
Um, should it say raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, or should it just say raise and appropriate? Because we don't really have an option.
I don't. What, where would we transfer from?
Uh, stabilization, free cash. Donna has this whole idea that you go to, and I'm sure it's sometimes do this, that you go to town meeting with a bunch of articles and you, and you don't specify.
Your general.
How you're paying them.
It's very general.
And then the motion at town meeting, I mean, is how Needham did it. You say, the motion at town meeting is, we're gonna pay out of this for free cash or general stabilization, or we're gonna raise and appropriate. But that's not how we do it in Monterey.
And I, I, I prefer the way we do it. I mean, it gives, it gives you flexibility, but it seems sneaky to me. I don't, I'd rather, like, we're making.
Yeah.
Dabble through the details and you're not giving them any.
I know, plus I feel like we've worked so hard to be specific. You still have to be specific at some point, all we're doing is deciding to be specific before we go to town meeting.
Yeah.
Because at the end of the day, at some point, you have to decide where you're taking it from. Why not get those decisions done when you're making the budget and you can be clear to everybody?
So. For other articles, I just deleted the or transfer from available funds, if that works for you.
Yeah. I mean, have we ever just transferred from available funds?
Well, we are for like when we're paying out of free cash or general stabilization.
I was, well, we were pretty clear on that.
Yeah.
The only other thing I can think of is, it would, removing that, you know how at the end of the year, we move from one line to another?
Yes.
Would not having that language in those warrant articles preclude us from doing that?
No, because we often do that with operating.
Monies for one.
Monies, which are operating. Uh, are operating in article three, which is the budget article, it says raise and appropriate certain sums of money, doesn't say anything about transferring from.
Oh, and actually, I, I think I wanna change this.
What?
Yeah.
Did you read that, actually? Um, I just had a thought on that, bring the word specifying, it might be in case something was turned down and now you had extra funds, maybe, and then you could say, oh, we can do that from free cash, you're sort of having to think on your feet.
That's definitely why they do it.
So you can change because you, you don't have to raise and appropriate, or you will have to raise and appropriate because of the way something else went before, you can make that change.
Yes, I think that is definitely why it's done, and I think in Monterey, we're not in the habit of voting down.
We don't vote down anything, so, so you can be sure about everything.
Okay, so I'm gonna actually say, I think I'd like to modify this.
Okay.
Um. So it currently says, to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand to supplement the fire department's operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Continued upon the passage of a proposition, two and a half ballot question, or take any other active delegate therapy, that's the warrant article. I actually would like to say to some of the fire department's operating budget to make a full-time fire department, how should I do that? I think it should say that in there.
Oh, for a reason, right?
Yeah, I, I'd like to say why, to, to transition to a full-time fire department.
Transition to.
I'd say transition to a paid fire department.
Well, they are paid now, people wouldn't argue.
They are.
Well, I think, I'm making a.
Or you could, you could be specific to, to.
Transition to.
Yeah, but I.
Paid professional fire department?
I, I, yeah, but you, you don't know what will turn up, there might be, um, I don't know, I'm starting to have.
I don't know, what's your thought?
Well, read, read that last sentence again.
To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, a sum of four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars to supplement the fire department's operating budget.
For a total of eight.
To in, to initiate a full-time.
Transition, to initiate.
To, the transition to a full-time fire department?
All right, if you wanna say from, I'll call, or we continue on calling, however you wanna describe it, I guess.
I mean, that's a good thing.
I know, that's, I think, I think, yeah. We might just.
Did I have the word paid in here? That, that's the, that's why, I, I'm resisting paid because people are already theoretically paid, they're not paid much
You want the word paid, the thing that.
and they're paid for very specific things, but money is paid.
Yeah, I know.
But the, you say.
The difference is full-time versus not full-time.
I think you could say paid professional or.
No, I'd say paid professional fire departments, because full-time, we don't know what will happen, particularly in the economy now. There might be shifts that we're leaving vacant or something like that. So, a.
Full-time doesn't mean twenty percent, full-time means the people, the personnel are paid employees, but it's paid professional, all right?
I know. No, I. Paid professional, that's.
Do you have any comment about the warrant article?
I'm just trying to get it all in there.
Okay, so basically, would read the fire department.
Don't, don't quit giving it new to me, because I'm, I haven't finished the.
Okay, finish that.
The one that I already write.
The, the, yeah.
I think we'll redo the whole thing.
I don't even know what to say. To begin the transition to or?
To, I didn't say initiate.
To initiate.
You get like symptoms out.
I know, right?
You can edit right in there. Do you have the budget cam so you can pop it in any warrant pretty easily?
Yeah, I could, I could, yeah, I could make changes.
Okay. Cause I'm not editing the one with the budget enough.
Oh, come on, why wouldn't you let me click?
The one that I. Which?
I wanna replace to a paid professional fire department from instead of full-time, I think that was the. I don't know, just. To initiate transition to a paid professional fire department for fiscal year, yeah, okay. Yeah. Reflect.
And Donna will see this in a minute.
Yep.
Even though we're all jailhouse lawyers, we do use jail counsel from time to time. What?
But I think I leave the, so the motion I would make on the town board is I move that the town raise an appropriate additional four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. for the fire department's fiscal year twenty twenty six operating budget to be allocated as follows. Three hundred thirty nine thousand three twenty nine for the full time department salaries and seventy three thousand three hundred ninety seven for insurance expenses, provided that such additional appropriations be continued on the passing of option app ballot budget. The wording is different than that, but in the sample thing, it had different wording for the two, so I figure like that's okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
One was the the written one was more general and the verbal one apparently wasn't, is typically more detailed.
Yeah, and I think that also just gets that. How Donna says in general, you can, which is you can leave it open. And Mickey made a great point. It makes more and more sense why if you're a town, you know, where maybe you're approving eighty to ninety, ninety five percent of articles and you have, maybe you have a bunch of special articles because you're a big town. Okay, these highway trucks we're not gonna buy, so we can use that money to.
Yeah.
But we're just not big enough where we do things like that.
We're not, we're not, no. No, I wouldn't I wouldn't like to see it like that. It's plus, like you said, we accept everything anyway once it gets there.
It's all done.
Ninety percent.
Um.
Oh, you're up.
So the other thing to do would be adjust the numbers in the budget. Roger, right?
Yep, yep, 'cause we would have to, 'cause we're changing. You just have to figure that out.
And it looks like you did.
No, I haven't done the budget. I haven't changed it yet.
Really? Looks like that was different.
No, 'cause if I if you go to fire, then it's still the same.
Fire department compensation is only two eighty four. Oh, that was definitely twenty five.
Six. So I'll just, I I can go through and change it on the spreadsheet and make a few changes on the.
Okay. So, yeah, so we change the salary, the compensation line and the insurance line.
And how much.
And then those would appear independently on the. Separate article.
Um, I do have a couple other items on the warrants. So one is opioid opioid settlements. This is basically housekeeping, but you may recall, two years ago, we voted someone representing Rural Recovery came, Gary Pratt, and we agreed to give our opioid settlement funds to Rural Recovery. And there were two ways to do it. One where you give them each year and one where you set up a pipeline so that if you get funds, they just can go right there. And we might have a warrant on there, basically just housekeeping to keep the funds moving to Rural Recovery.
Could you get any?
We've had some, yes, we have. Yeah, I wasn't quite certain what they were and how we were supposed to use them
Right.
until until I got an email from the person from the from the organization. And then talking to Justin, kind of realized where we, there's about um thirty two hundred dollars that, you know, 'cause they there's basically you get little payments, like a hundred dollar, two hundred, three hundred, four, six hundred dollar payments from the settlement. And so then uh in FY twenty four, I think it was at the select, at the like annual town meeting. I can't remember which one. We yeah, we there was an article for about a little over eighteen hundred dollars. And we've had about forty five hundred dollars worth of these payments, so it's like twenty two, twenty three hundred bucks that that's still sitting in there. Because we transferred to them. Plus, we actually just got one that wasn't on the list that they that they even set, so.
Yeah. Huh, what'd you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're just, they just end up in, they're just wired into, they get wired into our account.
Would we just use the language we had on last year?
Just have to, it was two years ago, actually. Just have to figure out because there may be a way to set it up so we don't have to vote it every year.
Two years ago, okay. Every year?
Um.
Which article is that?
Ex- it's it's our, Ex- yes.
Yeah, on page seven.
The one before this complicated one for the community centers.
So then.
Oh, you'll vote seven.
I didn't really, the numbers don't add up the same way.
So. She's taking out the CDPG income, which I don't think that she realizes that there are unrestricted funds, which our consultant
Okay.
who runs that program says we can spend anything anywhere, which I don't necessarily trust that, but I do believe that we can spend the unrestricted funds.
Right.
So we just have to, I will follow up on 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 that with. Donna was just like, what do you mean years?
And if we rescind that appropriation.
That's the way she wants to do it, 'cause we never spent it.
I know, but that doesn't sound like that makes the funds available. It may, it it. Right?
She's the lawyer.
That I I know, okay.
I think the point being you're transferring the sums of ninety two thousand dollars, right? That's what that is.
Well, you're 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 transferring the sums of ninety two thousand dollars, right? That's what that is.
Yeah, but rescind the appropriation of this and then transfer that, why aren't we transferring?
I think the difference mostly being, we didn't spend a dime of the one article.
Okay.
So we're not even. But I I do like transfer and I'll ask about whether we can just do transfer, 'cause it seems more accurate. Maybe we could do rescinding and transfer. Or something.
Or something. Um, and then so so first we're transferring them and then we're appropriating the sum of ninety two, so that's suggesting that ninety two is to, except that sum is to ninety two.
Yes. So if we're allowed to use CDPG and she wants us to put on the warrant, it will just be one, two, three, four. And four will say appropriated and transfer said sum of a hundred and forty five, six, ninety.
Ah, okay.
It's just lower now because.
Because she didn't, okay.
Yeah, and I and I get the, I get what she's doing. You know, it's what are we doing to each kind of appropriation that we already have, so.
Right.
Um, and it's a little funky in the article thing, you know, we're, it's a little, it's a little different, but.
Yeah, no, I get it. And I understand why she might have had questions about the CDPG. Boy, that acronym.
The other change that she made was two articles below, or not the only other change, but one change that she made. To accept, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of general law.
Right.
To establish a fire department under the direction of the select board.
Right, which is weird, 'cause we already have.
Yeah, so I don't know if you should say. To uh clarify the relationship.
Um. Let me see what that language of forty eight.
I mean, it may well be that it's just that which a fire department. So did um, Roger, did you just, I mean, updated ADU?
Yes, that that came from Tom just a little while ago.
Thing that. Oh.
Asking like for like the past hour or so. Past couple, it came around three o'clock. Um, just asking to make sure that that's the version.
So I think it's gonna get more complicated yet because Donna had some pretty significant red lines on ADU. I thought she had been involved in drafting the ADU by law.
I thought she had too.
Cause I felt that you didn't permission for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, I I I thought it was.
That's Jordan Reagan.
I'm pretty certain.
But. And maybe she did. And sometimes lawyers change their mind. And also this law, sometimes
Make their hours.
Sometimes they interpret the laws differently. A new law could be getting the AG could have made a interpretation of it.
Change. Do you want me to send this thing I just sent you to Donna?
I just sent an email to the planning board and to Donna and I said, you guys figure out.
That's the right word.
This. And the thing for them to have a meeting Thursday, maybe she can go to their meeting Thursday. But uh, you know, it's not, it's not incredibly surprising because, you know, like we said, it's a new law. And uh.
Yeah, they they have been in contact with you because I was at a meeting and they were reading the email that Donna had sent to them.
I and I remember them saying something about that too. And so going back to the fire department one for a minute.
Yes.
Um, it's because the law itself says in towns who accept this section or have accepted corresponding provisions of earlier law, they'll shap- there shall be a fire department established under the direction of selectmen who shall appoint a chief of the fire department and such other officers, etc. So basically, it's just using the wording from that article. I mean, we've already got a fire department.
Yeah.
But I I don't know, I guess we we established it without ever accepting MGL of any kind.
Mm-hmm.
So all we're doing is just saying, or clarifying that this is actually what we do. We've always done it, but that's. Um, the other thing that's interesting is that it says the chief of fire department shall also be in immediate control of all town properties in the fire department, which is so funny. For this reason, but anyway, okay, so I I'm not, the one thing I saw in that ADU one that I questioned her comment about by that comment.
I think we're gonna encourage town council to attend Thursday's.
Then should just talk to each other? Yeah, I would agree.
If not.
Um, was that she's questioning, yeah, where is it? Oh, yeah, the land coverage. The uh frontage setbacks building and land coverage, but she um, the part of it, it's not the lot size. That's the land coverage is is not referring to the lot size, which is I think her misunderstanding, but they can fix it. The coverage has a limit to what percentage of your lot you can cover with buildings.
Oh, yeah.
So that.
But in a way, it does. Yeah, it does create a minimum lot size if you're saying it needs to be a.
No, there's a specific meaning to minimum lot size in the zoning regs, which is to say if you have a like a less.
Hmm. Build lots. Pre-existing.
It's you unless it was pre-existing, right? And then in addition to the si- the minimum lot size, which is now two acres, you also have to have a certain amount of frontage and you have to have certain setbacks. But what the law per- the new law says, you can't limit it based on frontage. But you can keep your setbacks and your height rates.
Or or acres too, right? You're you're.
No, you can't have a minimum lot size, but you can have a setback, so and you can have a maximum height and you can have a maximum amount of land coverage, I believe. I I don't like, you know, it would be crazy to have a lot and cover ninety five percent of or whatever the percentage was if if you excluded all the setbacks.
What do they call it? FAR or something like that? Is there some, there's some term for that where it's a percentage of the lot, the the the.
I don't know that term.
There's there's a term for that.
So I don't know, maybe she's right and you can't do that, but it's twenty five percent now, which is
Mm-hmm.
pretty big part of your lot, so.
Half acre.
Pardon?
If it's a two acre lot, it'd be a half acre.
Yeah.
So it's.
That's a fair pick.
It's okay.
Forty thousand square feet for the acre, so that would be a ten thousand square foot footprint.
Right. Footprint.
Footprint, yes, footprints, because it does, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, floor, the floor area ratio.
Right.
That regulates building density by comparing a building's total floor size to the size of the land it occupies.
What is it called?
Uh FAR, floor area ratio.
FLAR.
FLAR.
No, so yeah, they call it F A R.
Okay.
Alright.
So that's then, is there anything else on our portion of the warrant? What was the comment about the?
Well, oh, I I know, so. So that she was just making sure that those funds were available and why they were.
Okay. Right, right.
Um. So the fire turnout gear. Basically, we have all of our free cash that we're going to spend kind of allocated. But I just, I guess I'm bringing to the table once again the idea that.
So I didn't hear back from him.
Yeah.
Okay.
I asked him and he said he keeps coming up with twelve. Turnout gear. So it's fifty seven hundred bucks.
Thirty.
Per per turnout gear.
And how much is the bill?
Uh sixty eight thousand four hundred.
Six times three.
So. He's not to um.
He.
Wait, so it's twelve times.
Fifty seven hundred.
That's the guy who ran the bill because.
So I asked him. That's what he said.
So and we wanna do that rather than put do half or part of it or whatever, okay?
Pro- I mean, it would end up being what was that, twenty percent more for those? I mean, like with the money, so yeah.
I thought to go to the next.
Go to the next year because you can't get the PFAS free ones and it ends up like.
Yeah, we got that good old fashioned PFAS.
Seventy seventy thousand dollars even more, it's crazy.
But he was, he was, he was more concerned about standing in at the smoke filled building than.
So my only.
Then we killed.
So that's all good. So my only question is, do we want to drop the seventy five to seventy or is that kind of stupid?
I I wouldn't do it, 'cause you think about predicting inflation.
Okay, leave it alone.
You know, and they're not, they're not, they're not known for ordering instruction like.
Um, so. That being said, uh. We're not gonna make a principal payment on the arrest, fire arrest vehicle unless someone can figure out how to do that.
Don't do it. We don't, we don't have to, right?
No, we won't have to.
We'll just find it for like another year, right?
Yeah, another year.
And if we were doing it, if we were doing it according to the plan we used for the other things, how much would it be?
Well, we set arbitrary years that we just said, we'd like to pay that off in in three years or four years and um.
Sure, right.
And then in Nikki's case, we don't even have a year limit. We just said we wanna do.
It's the amount, right, right.
And the idea is we're just being a little more aggressive and.
I just wondered if we had a, I never calculated a good number for that.
Yeah, so I think.
I I don't think we have a source of funds.
No one can think of any straight funds?
No.
Okay, um.
I don't think it's something appropriate for stabilization board, so.
Roger, on. No, it's, I mean, it's fine.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, stabilization, etc.
So how much free cash should I block? Based on this budget.
Based on this budget. We have um forty five thousand six hundred and forty four in free cash. And we just ran out for the numbers again. The highway truck, nine thousand six hundred and forty two, the um um principal payment, seven thousand seven hundred sixty six, uh principal payment on the library loan, twenty nine thousand fifty. The retiree health stabilization, thirty thousand, cultural council, thirty thousand. So the emergency ambulance, a hundred and four thousand, one thirty one seventeen. The turnout gear, seventy five thousand and we're still, I think that's actually gonna be less. Uh the FY twenty four bills, 'cause we're just gonna cover the uh the animal.
Do we have bills? Do we have bills?
No.
Can we just do end of year transfers for that?
Yeah, we could do that, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I'll just take it out, okay?
Yeah. Um. Because we'll also, we if we were to pay bills, we would need uh we would need an article too.
Yeah.
Um, go up, I, this is petty, petty, but there's really one. Where it says the retired group health stabilization fund and OPEB.
Yep.
Can you instead write OPEB parentheses previously to other stuff?
Also do the OPEB first.
Yeah, because.
We're trying to get rid of that.
Yep.
Yeah, and and I would do the other stuff in like parentheses and just say previously this, 'cause last year it was.
So.
So instead of just the slash, say previously retired group.
I see, yeah. Yeah, it's only because we made that mistake three years in a row.
Yep.
Well, we'd like to get rid of that mistake.
And if anyone ever, you know, next year is like, oh, yeah, the retired group health and life stabilization, we gotta put money in there.
Yeah, so that means all those numbers look good. And that leaves forty six thousand two seventy one sixty four.
Forty six. Nice.
Which is about a twelve percent or so of what we started with.
Are you looking for the library loan?
Yeah, what what you have down at the X for me?
Oh, it's from back there. I couldn't read it tonight.
Twenty nine thousand.
No worries.
So Mickey, actually, since you're here and since now we have some understanding of things. Every year, the the principal payment will be the same minimum for the next three or four years. And in theory, if you wanna petition the select boards of those coming years, that should be the additional principal payment. If they keep it set up like this.
So we always keep it set up as as a hundred thousand.
Yes. Yeah.
Unless you wanna do more.
But it used to be a little bit more hard to understand because the principal interest were all wrapped up together and it wasn't clear what.
Yes, I I like it, I like it since you separated. It makes so much more sense. I'm not particularly fond of this separating the principal payments, but separating out the interests. Yeah, 'cause I used to try to figure out how much we had paid for something and had no idea what the interest was and so you couldn't do it.
I kind of like the the splitting the principal so that it's clear that, 'cause the one portion that's in the operating budget, we have to by law pay. Like that's the way the loan is structured. And I think it it gives clarity to say we have to at least pay that and we think we should pay this down
And pay more.
because it's good to pay down our debt despite debt being good or not being bad. Um, and so I I like the clarity of it myself. I I think it keeps it clear in my mind that what we're working towards and.
It it's okay that, uh, I was really extremely concerned last year that people might not agree with it. And could they could they could vote this down after they voted the other way. And I just, you know, just I it would have been a little bit of blood.
Gotcha.
But it went down okay?
Mickey, no violence, please.
Should I go lower?
That's a yes.
Should I go lower?
Do a walkout?
That's practice. Do we run or do we stay in the same place? I forget what we're supposed to do.
I don't I don't think I can run at the moment, so.
No violence.
It's under the table.
No violence in town hall or at town committees.
Okay.
Um. Any other thing else on the warrant, on the rightful week for the finance committee, good?
There's nothing about the warrant, uh but on moving forward, we should have for the fire department, the fire chief's salary should be a line item like the police chief department worth. So I think for next year, we should be doing that.
I think you should be ready to answer that question.
It's interesting that nobody asked it. I was surprised too. Um, did you, so I went to that, um, do we have a moment for unanticipated business before they get here?
Yes.
So I went to the uh Beacon Hill and the Burger King thing on Saturday. Um, there was quite a crowd there. Um, it was the most interesting part of it was the woman who's the, I guess they made a liaison between the governor's office and and um I guess towns, rural rural areas, actually specifically rural. She was an interesting woman, I, pardon?
And and Gobi?
Yes, and Gobi. There was a lot of discussion. Um, the important piece for us to know at the moment is that we already know that Healy has proposed to be a bunch more money into chapter ninety. There's, and that includes recognition of road miles. There were people suggesting they also use population as one of the factors when they award it, but um, there is a joint committee hearing on Thursday, this is two days from today. Um, they urged everybody to, if you supported this, to send in um either a letter or testimony, you can actually click a link to be able to give live testimony. I wrote a letter.
No, sure.
Um, I would love feedback from you guys on that letter. I'm happy i- if we want to send it as a word, that's fine, if we don't, that's also fine, I'll just send it as me. Um. But I I, you know, if you had a chance to read it, basically I support what they're doing and say that it isn't enough, that if they want to actually achieve the goal of fixing the roads, they need to change the regulatory process for being in constant bridges. It's a problem and it's extremely resource wasteful, not just my, it's wasting human resources, it's wasting time, it's wasting effort, it's just a problem.
It's time to be a double percentage.
Well, and it's a ridiculous amount of money, right?
Uh.
To go to to cost how how many millions of dollars to put in a bridge and how many years in Beretton? And that's only one of, what, five bridges they need to replace? And every culvert, like two hundred culverts are gonna, okay.
All sign on.
So if if you can do anything to get the number of words in that letter down, please tell me what that is.
Well, well, if they're meeting on Thursday, should we sign it tonight?
That would be great, are you okay?
I I would want that signed here.
Okay.
I think we'll sign it as.
Can you just send to me how printed out?
Okay.
Can I send it to you?
I don't think I got it.
I would I would love to wordsmith it for you, Susan, but there's no time.
But there's no time.
I got it, I got it.
Isn't that nice when there's no time?
They always said if you wait, you know, until the night before, some papers, two, write the paper only takes one night.
Practice. Right. Well, you know Abraham Lincoln's famous line, right? Sorry, I wrote you a long letter and have time to write a short one. Um, it's really a relief when I think that I sent something and I should do. Um, it was in it was in a.
Standing meeting, I I I kind of liked going and I don't know how effective it is, but.
Yeah.
Oh.
What?
Um, about the opioids, we probably won't need a town meeting art article because
Okay.
Donna just got back to me and in twenty twenty-three, they changed it. So per chapter seventy-seven of the acts of twenty twenty-three, the town keeps the approval of the director of accounts to set up the special reserve fund to hold opioid proceeds. The funds can then be expended by the select board without town meeting approval for the purpose of the settlement. If they have been put into an legalization fund, though, they will need approval of town meeting.
I don't think we did.
We didn't do that.
Okay.
So that's what I was thinking and.
Okay.
I remember when these funds were coming to towns and we had such a little amount of funds with other towns and cities that were large now.
Long way, yeah.
It was this whole question, how do we handle it? And so it seemed like they did.
Do we have to, so they've already set up a reserve fund? Or do we have to establish a reserve fund?
The account will set it up and it may already be set up and we may need to go to the select board, but that will happen at a future meeting.
Okay.
It just won't need to be anything for this meeting.
Okay.
Um, my other question for us was whether or not I saw it on the agenda, do we actually need minutes for the fire department briefing on the Saturday?
Yes, but I'm not gonna put the onus of preparing them on you and.
Who's gonna do it?
I'll figure out.
I know.
I'll I'll on to your to do them, because I was saying, okay. If you help me with the finding me briefly.
I don't know, I'm like.
I know, there's no equity.
No, 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 I would have to help anyway, I'm sorry.
There's no equity in my offer, but you just don't have to think five seconds.
I choose.
I'll take the company off your hands for for no exchange of.
Uh, I would have more help anyway, you know that.
I know.
Uh, one of these days I'll sit down and I'll cancel everything on my schedule in just three minutes.
And that day will be the day you kid porn. Good luck, good luck fighting your life.
It it needs to happen like over the weekend.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, like, there's never time, that's what happens.
I usually actually get it done.
You do, Justin, yes.
No, not. A new father.
So the opioids are coming off of town meeting.
That just doesn't sound right.
I remember I remember when I. See, come to. I used to be like that. I used to be like that. I said, I used to be like that, now I'm getting like. Been there for a long time now. I'm not these guys. I can't believe I just did that.
I remember.
I I don't know, I can't, it won't let me minimize the window. I hit the wrong thing and now it's not letting me. I'm gonna, I'll I'll figure it out in a second somehow. Hey, right.
I should use the.
I somehow hit something and it won't let me minimize the window and I can't get any of the other talking.
You do kind of hover over?
I I don't, oh, wait, I gotta thank you, that was really, oh, so interesting, it's now not offering me minimize.
Do you need to save it and you have to click?
Good.
Okay. Is it full screen?
I got it.
Hi, um. Okay. Crazing.
Yeah, no, like snow.
God, that was crazy.
I'm gonna go back down, I'm gonna go back down from late to get my boot back for the white show.
Then it's your fault.
Yeah.
You were your boot. I usually that one day I was like, don't you know, Muffin?
Maybe it's my fault, I watched you carry the.
Crazy time.
Yeah.
Um, if I send you the link, will you send it to them?
Yes.
Yeah, because otherwise like the the written one's gonna get.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Susan, do you need help tomorrow night, Wednesday, because the.
I mean, I'm doing it for the second time, so I I feel okay to.
Right. And you go to keep you?
Yeah, I'll be there, I have a long drive to get there.
A whole over, I think, oh my god.
Right.
Did a great job, I.
Did a great.
It it does however.
I did, I made some changes, I'll explain to you why.
It it does appear that any part that we were not correct in thinking that we could do as do it as any time. Any override amount that does not get used in this for the budget.
Just a one. Oh, yeah, well, no, it's not exactly right. Uh, it does carry forward, but each year, you have to re- you you have to ask for permission to use whatever of the nine, one point one million you're gonna use for the next year. For this year, you're okay.
Is it special article? If the. I just glad the town's committee, we um, we're uh six oh one, we're called, yeah, six oh one.
We called the. No draft today, right?
A community may seek voter approval for an override for more than one year, which we're doing. To do so, a separate question must be placed on the ballot for each fiscal year in which additional levy capacity being requested will be used. So whatever we need this year, we don't have to ask for it because we're asking for the whole one point one million. Enough.
And what would we have to do in the future?
And let we have to figure out how much of that we need to use each year of the one point one million. Just to conform the voters, I think it's sort of like uh a death service, you you have to ask for the death service. What is already approved or wrong?
Do we have D A D L S, where's the highlighted thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the corporation, I'm angry. It's not the.
It's it's confusing, to say the least.
Now, I'm sorry for adding to confusion because Donna and I had a big disagreement about this, but he was wrong.
Anyway, he's very wide awake.
Very far from the agreement, what the real issue is, he felt that it had to hit the tax rate immediately.
That part I I was sorry.
Absolutely. And because it's really all about the capacity overrides in the levy itself. So you're you're by by approving the override, you're increasing the levy, uh limit.
Okay, um, so this is off of the uh um two and a half ballot question, requirements and procedures.
Yeah.
And under general overrides, it says um so use of the relationship with over use additional tax of earmark. If total appropriations for the year are less than the stated amount, the community may only increase its levy limit by the amount actually appropriated. The additional funds raised by the override are earmarked for the stated spending purpose only in the first fiscal year.
They're like, it's only in the first fiscal year?
Only in the first fiscal year. So instead of, so from from my understanding is that, let's say, we 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 say we're gonna do a one million dollar override, but if we only do it, if we're only using, you know, four hundred thousand dollars of it, that's what we're using and we actually have to come back for another override, if we need any more money the next year.
It's based on use, not um on the limit.
Right.
Right, well, it makes sense.
So you can you can only you can only this only amount that should use.
But but that makes sense, right? If if we were on a multi-year budgeting plan, you would approve it once and then you can spend it, but we're not. We're on a cash accounting budgeting basis, so it has to be approved that exact amount on a cash account basis. Even though we have authority, we don't have.
Another way to that they could is if total appropriations for the year are less than the stated amount of the override, then the community may only increase its levy limit by the amount actually appropriated.
Yeah.
The only exception to that is that they do have a multi-tiered one, we can't do it at this one, we would have had to put it on the ballot. But you can do a tier one, say, we're gonna raise it this much, here's X, here's this one, here's Y, this may be the suit, but we didn't do it so.
I tell you, I got three different choices.
No, but I just think.
Like I say, this makes sense.
Yes, logically.
Uh, it was a very old document that the the D O R supervisor of all the community relation, but anyway, talk, she's really good.
And then so how so?
And she sent along a paper, but it's kind of old. It's about explaining overrides and it was helpful, but it didn't really speak much to.
This is too.
Well, I think the goal, I think the goal is to decide what we all agree how to do it, right? Given what our.
All we have to do is agree what has to go on the ballot.
This year.
One thing I've seen everywhere is that town meeting does not approve this.
Yeah.
It does not go to town meeting, it just goes on the ballot.
So we already did that, we had to do it thirty-five days before it's set in stone.
We voted. So the question will be, you voted for the one point one million, that sounds like you should have voted for how much you want to use.
The theory.
I look at it like authority versus authorization, right? We have the authority, now we have to authorize it.
So Susan, you're gonna kind of explain what it's gonna look like on the warrant and in the budget? We can't change the ballot question? It doesn't hurt us to have it the way it is, other than that.
No, no. It made it valid.
It's hard to explain to people.
Right.
Right, well, I think, I don't know, this is pretty clear about multi-year override, you asked for the whole thing and this this is this giving out of.
Um, right, the problem is the multi.
It would have been said differently, so which is why I'm prison, what are you gonna say?
Um, so Donna and I had a conversation and basically um the safest way to do it is to put a fire department, we basically split the pieces of the fire department budget, we put the like FY twenty-five compens- pardon, twenty-five compensation plus a safety factor into the actual budget. And then put the remainder of the necessary compensation for you like full time plus the the health insurance monies.
Plus the and gear.
The gears and this other thing.
Yeah, and that always was, right?
Um, and all of this, plus the health insurance coverage um into the warrant article contingent upon passage of Prop two and a half on the ballot.
So we have.
That way, even if Prop two and a half fails, we still have
Yeah, sorry.
a budget and a fire department budget. It won't be the correct amount to make it full time, but we will still have a workable budget. The only thing that wouldn't have passed would be for fire department. In fact, if you need the fine print, we could have another election.
Well, the question of what you're.
Yeah, definitely.
If override doesn't pass.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, we still end up with a budget underneath the five million.
Yes, yeah.
We're still underneath the current year levy limit.
Correct.
Yeah.
We don't we don't even need it override.
No, we would, we did, we would, for the four hundred thousand, not for.
Yeah. If they were just, the department was running as it has run, we would be okay.
Yeah, oh, but by adding the new pieces.
Right, that's the whole thing.
We would.
That's been the trigger all along.
That's my question, yes.
You're gonna be over the levy limit. If we add some extra inspired.
Yes, correct.
Oh, well, definitely need you.
Right, that's the trigger, that's been the trigger. And my question would be, so we have to vote, so in the order of the town meeting, the proposition of the override voted first.
No, there's no. Town meeting is not voting on the override at all.
There's no override at the town.
Oh, they don't vote, I mean, but on the.
There's an appropriation for the, there's a separate article.
They vote on the appropriation article first, right?
And I'll now read you what's gonna say in the written word and also what I'm gonna say on the floor.
So so we go, vote on the budget, vote on the appropriation, the next article, we got an article for the appropriation. If that all passed, then it would be the ballot question on the on Tuesday for for the override, so.
And it would be a spec- the additional fire department expense.
Yes, would be what the appropriation.
Would be a special article as opposed to.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's to protect us from having to have another meeting.
Because if the because if the ballot question fails, it's contingent that that appropriation.
Yeah.
This contingent on the on the ballot question, the ballot question fails, then we fall back to the whatever the the budget is.
That but. To dislound the ballot.
Yeah, that makes sense, it's authority and authorization, right, of previous.
So and then in future years, we still have to. Get ready to go into override.
An override for the amount depending on.
How much it's over.
How much it is, if it if it is within the.
So it would be, the written warrant article would read, you see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer the available funds to sum up four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars to supplement the fire department's operating budget to initiate transition to a paid professional fire department for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, contingent upon passage of a proposition two and a half ballot question or take any other action relative thereto. And then I would say on the floor, I move that the town raise and appropriate an additional four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars for the fire department's fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget to be allocated as follows. Three hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars for full. Three hundred thirty nine thousand three hundred twenty two dollars for full time department salaries. And seventy three thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars for insurance expenses, provided that such additional appropriations be contingent upon the passage of a proposition two and a half ballot question.
Today, what, the ballot question on Tuesday, not today. Right, but.
Doesn't specify the date.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't specify the date, you just said.
No, on the passage of the proposition.
I was gonna say, you get that question.
Uh, they have to pass it on the, we had to vote it in on election. At election day. At the election. They also have to pass this so that we have a board of directors supporting the budget.
That, no, that makes complete absolute sense to me, everything I've seen, I've made all three different versions.
I'm just gonna pause. I know, it's ridiculous.
So, um, so we, I think that, you know, the reason I was joking and bothering is. Um, you know, Steve, we, the finance committee needs to spend time on the finance committee budget, because I think it would behoove us. To unpack that language in, not totally, but at least to explain it the way it was explained at the, or you, you can be there, someone can be there. Because you've explained the whole fire department, that's not really the peruse of how you vote for it in those two briefings. But under the finance committee and what we approve and how and why, I think it would be in that peruse to explain it. So maybe we can come up with a graphic, I, I don't know, I think we should think about it.
And whether, the other thing is when, if people ask about the actual individual salaries. How I explain all the parts that go into that, I don't know. Down to the fact that like.
I think, I think.
Getting to the mini-brief, the four hours somehow.
I think there's like three things here. There's, you know, there's the base salary. It's not based on a forty hour work week, you can work fifty two hours without overtime. And that's how it's calculated.
Right. Yeah.
You know, it's not, so. You know, I did that spreadsheet that showed if it was a forty hour weekly comparative to other departments, to give you a sense where you work.
They, they don't, they just speak from their salary component, there's a.
Well, don't forget that all the other salaries are listed individually.
Yeah.
Which, you know.
Right, but you could just say, because it's a, it's a staffing issue, and we're figuring out the full staffing pattern, that's why it was figured out in a group. Because it's not as stamed, you have departments on exact work, you know?
It's the library. The library does it, or so, individually.
So that's, and we've been using the library as our equivalent, right, with the. And I'm just saying, but you could just say, it's a, you know, that's our goal to get there, but this time it's really based on. Departmental staffing, not individuals.
Yeah. It's a lot of hassle.
Can we, can we look at what the operating budget now looks like?
With these changes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it possible?
Yeah, you just have to remind you what the changes are.
Was one not really before.
No, we signed it at next week's meeting.
Next week, right, so, um, Steve and Roger, you tell me if you wanna, so we should be at the next week's meeting when everything's solid to do our. Take, to do our material and bring it on Friday.
Well, there's one, such as the.
Yeah, so we'll wait till after they sign and then we'll.
Then we have all the.
Well, we wanna make sure it's mailed.
No, this is separate issue. I'm saying, the warrant goes out, right? Once we know the warrant, we're not mailed yet, then we make our privy, we're privy to it, but it, right?
So we can rest me. You wanna have a person?
No, I need to get the numbers and make sure they're right. I don't need to rehearse.
So, oh, there's numbers.
Alright, let's all look up.
And Roger's gonna. So.
I don't need your air.
It was six fifty one. So what, what are we changing it down to now?
Three twenty one, five twenty one?
Three twenty.
So that's the break, that's one of the categories.
Three twenty one, five twenty.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and then.
The health insurance.
Health insurance has to go down. You have calculated quite a number of plans, and now I have to remember what.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I can, I can find it right here.
Okay.
So, we're just gonna bring it down to what it originally been, which was.
Three family, two.
Three family, two, two, two persons, yeah. And we'll still do the two-person plan as a contingency? So that turns out to be about one fifty one.
What did it end up as?
I brought it down to one fifty one, three eighty, one fifty six.
Okay, uh, so I had a different. So I had that the health insurance for the fire department was seventy three, three ninety six, eighty?
Was that, was that for all, for three different, uh, family plans?
Uh, maybe.
Because we've gone to three.
That's right, so that, that means we have to change those other ones.
Two, two and a one person, a two, two and a two person. Is what we changed.
We need two families and a two person.
Alright.
So that means the numbers are all wrong.
So what does it say on the operating budget?
So, this is what it's down to.
What's the percent?
And it's five point four one percent. And you come over, if this, the levy limit, you know, I, I need to talk to the accountant. So this is what we are, you know, there's so much guessing in what happens at this point in time when it comes to this sort of stuff. Estimates and all that. So this was our working number for the stabilization to fifty eight, ninety. Um. And then, uh. We were using stabilization funds, right? We are using stabilization funds? Hold on a second.
I don't know. You know what, you're getting into the really weeds of it here.
Yeah, well, you need to know if you're gonna make.
So, we're, we're gonna be. We, we, we got two hundred and fifty, we have two hundred and fifty.
Don't move the other rapid moves, and you don't know.
We have plenty of extra levy limit.
We do, because I think if I was to see this number here. There, which is effect, which is basically where this number goes.
Yeah, we have plenty of levy limit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we go back to the operating budget?
Now, well, that was, that's again before the special article for adding.
Yeah, which will affect the tax rate. It will affect the tax rate.
Absolutely.
It just won't show in the operating budget.
It's gonna be in the budget, it's gonna be appropriated, but, uh, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah.
It'll essentially be this, oh, yeah, special article.
It's just that the, the numbers we put in the warrant are pulled up to change again, because I messed up the health insurance.
Yeah, no.
Um, so. Uh, just a couple of updates from me. Uh, I spoke with like our film working group, or I spoke with Michael and. Told him about the cut. To sixty two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, and.
And they were fine with it. They're just happy there's gonna be an operating budget.
Yeah, that's a big step.
That's great that you built that feedback.
The only other, uh, I haven't gotten that number in here yet, is the mowing for the Lombardo group.
Yeah.
Lombardo property at me. So, I have numbers from two people out of the three, so.
It's probably a few thousand dollars.
About five thousand or so, a few thousand, depends on who we get, but yeah, it'll be a few thousand dollars.
We might wanna look at buying mower.
I've been saying that for years, and we have the staffing, I've been saying that for quite a few years.
Well, it's different, it's different too. I mean, this is a, this really bumps the mowing up. We were at fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah, yeah, with that, another three thousand. Maybe we can have the, uh, maybe the, um. The, um.
Community center.
No, the, um, the, the, the guard out there at the, at the beach.
But you know what, I don't, we might mow.
That guy's a catch it up.
Something's make sense though, like, it's, uh, it's hard financially, Eileen, I don't know if this would make sense to you. To leave the cemeteries, uh, contracted out, because cemeteries are.
Separate animal.
They're also.
Pain to mow.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, they're a high.
And they don't always mow, and they're not all used. I mean, I'm not saying we should bring everything under the cover, but I am saying that there are things like that. Property Lombardo and even the community center, which are costing us a lot. And when you look at the staffing pattern now, and I understand it was a little different one. Jim Hunt was here, he was really, really great at logistics, and he seemed to have that extra bandwidth to do it if he had the right mower, right? And then, you know, that gives him more coverage, and then if those guys are doing the fire department, it's just, it's building up our resources instead of. And I don't wanna take away money or contracts from anyone, but it is getting cost prohibitive, you know? It's like, do you wanna own your propane, propane tank, or you wanna rent it?
Apparently, everybody wants to rent everything now, not me.
They're not going to own everything. You're gonna be everyone, bring down that and I'll make it work. So, do we have to look at that this year now?
Well, we gotta add the Lombardo mowing.
Right, but do we have to, right, but we're not adding a new.
I don't think we're gonna buy a mower this year.
That's what I'm saying, so.
If you do it yourself, you have to remember, you know, workman's hawth is you.
Well, we have, but we're.
They have to handle that, the same.
With the highway system.
Yeah, they pretty much have the, they pretty much have the bandwidth, that's what I'm saying.
We could throw them some of the maybe easier properties. Leave the cemeteries contracted out.
Right, the community center, the ball field. I agree, the cemeteries are complicated and.
The dam, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, how hard is the beach to do?
The beach, yeah, those all could.
Right, the beach, the community center, and the ball field.
Probably an extra year conversation.
Yeah.
And we're all.
For Lombardo.
And the fire department now, that was still re-contracted?
Well, right now it's company.
Company.
Maybe the fire department should be doing it if they're forty seven.
Well, I, I.
We have to have that.
Do you know, scissors, they walk.
Anyway, I, I don't think, I don't think, you know, in the eleventh hour now is the time to propose that.
Right, no, 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 but, but, one of the, one of the ways we've been successful is exactly doing this, when like something comes up, we. Tagged next year, and we deal with it early on, so I think that's a good administrative, follow-up.
I also don't think you're gonna save a whole lot of money at the end of the day by the time you buy a mower and. Whole bunch of resources, but you might, it might make sense.
I guess we really have to depend, we'd have to look at highway, if we're planning on highway to do it, you know.
What's the project, what's the timing?
They, they might actually argue that they, that they don't have.
They don't have the time.
And now that you're down one person, it's a bigger conversation.
It's a bigger conversation.
Plus, I, we have to look at the cost of the mower and figure out.
Yeah.
And advertise it over, we'd like be that we'd spend twice as much a year just paying off them.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not. Um, but I think it needs to look down, and it's not a conversation for today.
Anything else for today, though? Finance committee budget.
Um, what, I have a factor on the statistic.
I did redo this, I think now it's accurate, but I could just.
Can we wait on the override and just go with department, like, I, I would just, I just wanna finish all departments.
Yeah, well, let's talk to the.
Yeah.
And make sure we can see FY twenty six requested and.
So, and the parks department pushed back, they were, you said that.
Parks commission, I haven't quite talked to them yet, but we're not gonna do all the extra contracted services.
Right, well, I'm just saying, they might have some perspective, we wanna talk to them, but that hasn't happened. Um, the community center was okay with their changes, the tree warden was happy, um, the lifeguard contract is what it is. So we're kinda like up against it, and, and the school budget finalized, so there's really nothing else.
So the only thing.
I'm saying, I'm sure there's a fire, fire department.
So, so the only thing I'm waiting to hear back is treasure services. I got in touch with, um, Sarah Hunter today, uh, her daughter was in a tragic accident.
Oh, my God.
Car flipped over and was thrown out of the car, so she's in the hospital right now.
Oh, my God.
And going to some surgery. They're planning on going home on Friday, so I'll see if I can get anything from maybe.
I think, well, you know, you know what, I think we should just level fund it, or maybe go up. A percent.
Three or four percent.
Five percent or something like that, we just put five percent on it?
No, not five percent.
Around three, three point fives.
No, three.
Three?
Yeah.
Should we go up three percent, or should we level fund it?
Well, they don't have to know what we did. I would, I would.
I, I think.
I mean, I gotta go up.
Okay, go up three percent.
I don't think it's realistic to go up less.
You gotta go up a dollar then.
I think you go up three percent, though, it's cola and.
Yeah, two grand.
Let's have.
So the only number we.
It'll get around that, the, the E?
Oh, yeah, it is.
Um, you know what I would say, who? Um.
Start saving the cans or.
Yeah, start saving.
Why is there, why is, uh, bonds and insurance still green?
Uh, bonds and, well, Medicare isn't that, that much, because that's the number I got. Bonds and insurance, I was waiting to hear back on, uh, from, um. I'm waiting to hear back from, uh, Chubb, which is the, um, insurance, like, insurance for, uh, public safety.
Oh, but the only thing also, and even though we have a schedule for capital items, that can change over the year based on the rates. But we, we're comfortable with what we locked in?
No, we're paying off last year's note with those, so those are.
Gone.
Next year, whatever we take the money out of, you're talking about the capital?
Yeah, I'm talking about, that's the only.
We've known that interest since October.
Alright, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a one-year note.
It's a one-year note.
So this, we're paying what's coming due.
And, and when do we get the new note? Oh, so the new note will be next year, won't be mid-year, will be out.
October, we'll pay off this and get the next one.
And then we pay, so we break it all.
October, it's in October, at very end of October.
Okay.
You can't pay in the middle of the year. You can only reduce what you pay again, right?
Pay one time. Right.
So, if we, let's say we appropriated an extra twenty thousand to put, uh, towards the principal. We can't pay it when, right, when we get the tax on it. We have to wait till the bond renewals in October and renew it for less by paying it off.
Is that where we are? That's amazing, five seven three one.
What's that?
Is that where we are?
Yes. What's the seventy thousand?
That's just the, the, it did pull down the, uh.
The audit?
The audit number, but it doesn't affect anything.
It shouldn't be in there. I don't think.
It was on that, it was historically what happened in the previous year, they put in changes that.
Right.
Yeah, but we, you know.
We know, pretty big. Yes, yeah.
Here we go.
We did, and it passed, yeah. And it passed.
What else do we go down at special time meeting?
Oh, gosh, I have to.
Are there other money records? Cause they should pull them through.
That's the only thing I see in the revisions one.
No, no, that's the annual.
Oh, the special, I'm sorry, yeah.
The special minutes, it's the bottom.
Nope.
Yeah.
There you go.
Wait.
No, that's.
No. No. You're gonna want to mend it, they do need to go up there, the one that wants.
Supposed to tell November twenty twenty five, it is November twenty twenty four is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's very good.
So there's, oh, that's the cover letter.
Yeah.
It's out on that.
There we go.
There you go.
There's the.
The audit. The historic district is not part of the operating, the bills are not part of the operating.
Transfers.
The O P E B transfer is not, and the other stuff is not.
Transfers, okay.
Let's see. What's that?
Senior tax.
Oh, yeah, yeah, senior tax right on.
Accepting the thing in the shore, so, yeah, the audit is the only thing.
Yep, wow, that's good news. Good cleaning up.
So, um.
Cleaning up town hall.
As we go down through, it's kind of.
What was the big fight? It used to be that what had happened here, did we allocate any money to town hall or just rather?
We have money for.
There was about forty thousand dollars in a budget that's been there a few years, it turned out to be like sixty, sixty-five.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Just, we've been using.
No, it was forty-nine.
Was it forty-nine or was it sixty?
Yeah.
So, we've been using that for, um, painting, basically, and a few things here and there. So.
This summer would be.
That was like the big issue.
Four, is that what the four is gonna cost?
So, this summer would be a good time to maybe tackle some, I know we had some HVAC problems this winter. With freezing.
Yes.
And somewhere like the auto delivery oil wasn't showing up, but.
That happened.
There was one that wasn't, so maybe we could.
Actually, they were, they were both, they, they both had to do with the. Oh, oil delivery.
Nah.
Except for, except for the pipe bursting, that, that I don't think was, was after that.
Yeah, anyway, so, we have money for repairing and fixing up town hall.
Yes.
Alright, that good. Anything else? Mickey, that was that standard, that you've talked about all the year?
But, so, um, Mike Canales at, at the Beacon Health thing, who, who's the stock.
Yes, sir.
He was recommending reading the book Abundance, because basically it's how, talks about how our. Overregulation is actually causing problems.
Causing problems.
So, I'm, I'm planning to get.
Overregulation is actually causing problems, so I'm, I'm planning to get one, get it every day.
And maybe that will change your mind on the CPA.
Is that federal or state?
I don't know.
Or how, on regulation.
I, I think it's just in general, in our case, I definitely think our state is.
This is a very old story that nonprofits have been saying forever, that the mandates are costing us more money than what's aging and it don't make sense.
That's why I'm afraid of CPA, I just feel like it, it just is like more.
I agree.
Regulations on how we spend our money.
I agree.
For minimal.
And if it was one to one, I know, if it was one to one, it would draw me in more, but it's a variable match, it's getting lower and.
Um, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, the state appropriate, it's an annual appropriation from state to that, so they could change it, reduce it, and have it.
And the more time to join in, this.
The more it's, the moving.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, this is just the basic question, any end-of-year encumbrance, encumbrances, closeouts or any other?
That's after, I'm gonna be working on that, looking at it to see what there might be.
Because that's the only other thing that could, you know, have an impact.
What we will do is, as we've done the past couple of years, and every year we've cleaned up a little bit more. But we also create these new encumbrances and.
I guess.
You know, we'll try to be very conscientious about letting the, killing off articles that are old and not used and letting them die to free cash.
Yeah, no, I was talking about one good thing that we've done, this budget sheet really does, is where are we to date and what have they spent from here based budgeting. But, you know, still, some of the departments, like we know, I don't know where the um, cemetery, you know, commission is, are notoriously late in submitting their bills.
Yes.
So we just wanna do a final run of that before we finalize the numbers, if anyone's holding on to that, I always don't remember the big issue, I always don't remember the little.
I think it's mowing on those.
Yeah, so let's just, Roger, check with those departments.
On that, that, there's a couple of departments that I know, you know, cemetery commission is one that does sort of hold on to bills for a while, so.
And also, I think one of the, the bills that are most likely to get lost are mowing. Because most bills are super regular and you've just gotten back into mowing season, and you get your first bill for. Many thousands of dollars. And you haven't been submitting them because you haven't been getting them and. We run into the mowing problem. If we mowed our own lawns, it wouldn't be this way.
You go. Yeah, I am careful, I mean, really, I'm sorry I haven't read last week, but down to five, that's the number five million seven.
Yeah, but that's because it's not happening at the fire department.
I get it.
It it's really, you know.
Yeah.
It's really still twelve.
It's the really, yeah, yeah, um.
Yes.
But that is including.
I know, but that number.
The Lake Garfield stuff, which has been a special article, and bringing that.
But that's what I'm saying, I, I, it's, I mean, that's one of the things that we would, I was planning to do with the fire, you know, the department. Yeah, but we showed like the different departments and right, Frank, remember like, yes, this is what we think, and our health and welfare, this is. So without the fire department, that, that increase is very, very incredible, you know? With it, it's a different story, but that's.
Other question is whether I got.
Alright, then I try to showcase what the heart, what is it?
Increase, I'm looking for the bottom line move, which five something. What, what's that increase?
The total increase is.
For the overall budget?
Four fifty-nine.
So this is.
Yeah.
As a percentage. As a percentage, it's an increase of five point two four percent.
Which is really amazing, given that. Right, with Lake Garcia.
Wait, one at a time, one at a time, so, uh, Steve's asking about the school department, the school department went up uh, um.
Really?
Like four uh, four percent.
Roger, can you do something, I think it's worth doing, will you just hide the select for recommends and finance committee recommends columns, cause we have it. I think they were instituted because we had very disagreeable. Committees.
There we go.
So the school committee here. Is, the stipend went up three percent and the overall budget was four point three five percent. I thought I saw a five percent. Yeah, they actually, I, I, they're, they're, at one point it was a little bit higher, but then they came back and brought the time.
We actually, Roger, while we're at it, can you please also hide L and H?
The L and H?
The, yes. Let me go back to. Here. Because that was really for when we had finance committees that were proposing entirely different budgets.
I, I was, I'll be honest, I was using the old, that the, the original budget doing years, and so all those things were kind of on.
Yeah, we don't, unless next year, maybe we'll need to, I don't know, in general, let's try not to, let's try not to need it.
Yeah, so that's how that.
I don't know why I didn't ask you to do that six weeks ago.
Because I think we were so focused on these that we never got out.
Well, no, but it always was like visually.
Yeah, I know.
Roger, could you turn it down to the bottom?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's good for circulation.
Down here, right there.
Yeah, but it is just, I feel like in a way it's kind of deceptive, because that's just that, without the fire department.
In some ways it's more transparent and in other ways it feels less, it's like.
I know.
Both then.
I get it.
Um, the calculation to be under the levy, but it includes a special town meeting, they're talking about audit, right? That has to be factored in.
What's that, where?
The special town meeting created additional expense, seventeen thousand for that, that has to. So, yeah, I think that's, that's.
Yeah, we now budget that for.
So this was, this was last year off the uh.
We budgeted for two.
Yeah, um, this came off the recap, those numbers came off the recap, and I tried the best that I could. These numbers are all, that's like the budget numbers, this is a working, this is our free cash. Uh, o- other funds, when you look at the tax recap, they show stabilization in there for other funds, so that's the stabilization number. These are all estimates, this is what the cherry she has, it's just like, those are just estimates, I kind of guesstimated a little bit, I used, I asked Don about.
Yeah.
Uh, exceptions and allowances, so I just use a twenty-five thousand dollar overlay. And uh, which came to that number, those, of course, they put the money in, they take the money out, magically they do things. And so I came down to these numbers, like this formula and that one are the same numbers effectively. From the, from the twenty-five to twenty-six, which comes down to the total real and personal property, that's our levy capacity, which. That was our FY twenty six. State approved. State approved, so this is what that number is, and that's the four million nine hundred eight zero three three seven ninety-nine. Is the total real and personal property tax levy. And that's probably come up with.
Isn't that amazing?
I think the other income's way underestimated too. The, the estimated receipts? Always way underestimated. Yeah, well, historically, what I've seen is that, I kind of look back at the budgets, we seem to always do right around uh, three hundred. Uh, almost four hundred thousand, like changes at time a little bit, but our receipts are always like half a million. Or a little more half a million, but I talked to the accountant, the accountant, and it's like, that's just what you do. Well, I, I know, it was kind of a conscious, cause if you don't need that, you can't do it.
Then you're really screwed, then you're screwed.
You don't have a lot of control or people buying new cars, for example, your X side stacks. Yes. Cause people stop buying your cars, your X side stacks, it's like a no side. So, it's kind of, it's kind of the one area in your budget that's kind of, it's like, like a floer. It's the one place that really adds some free cash.
Yes, if that's the worst case scenario, but it's a bad case scenario if we always make, did we ever figure out that problem with Airbnb in the Lake uh, Buell district?
Working on, uh, working on some, there were several issues with Airbnb right now, I'm working with the state on that now.
Okay.
I talked to Lee Davis about it, but there's issues with Airbnbs.
Yeah, and then the.
And the issue is the collection of taxes.
Yeah, even though we're getting it, we should be getting it when the people.
So, um.
When people.
In full, in full transparency, right, if you go to a uh, a, a property through Airbnb. Um, for Monterey, you get to the point where you're supposed to reserve, it says reserve, and that is where it's supposed to tell you.
Right.
All your fees, all your taxes, everything. Monterey's tax is not in there.
Why isn't it?
Nobody can tell me, I've got the state trying, I got the state DOR looking at it, and I've talked to them, and I've sent an email off to Lee Davis's office. Over in um, over in New Marlboro, they actually have situations where the.
That's hard.
The address, it is a Great Barrington uh, address, and so.
So we. Can we, this is important, and I think.
Oh, well, I agree, we can do it.
Can we wrap up the, this property?
The only reason I was asking it for this was because of the press and speed ass, and the fact for our next year issue also is the thing about. The um, dealing with the people who aren't living near the corporations that we're not getting money from, that own Airbnbs, we haven't done.
Yeah.
So those are issues that we might.
Well, we're taxing Airbnbs to the match right now.
Correct, but we also have a problem that we have Airbnbs that are not individual people, they're, they're. They're corporations and that we don't, they don't have a variance for uh, op- operating the business where they are, we can go after them for that.
Yeah, but.
So that's a next year, I know, I'm just, yeah.
So, two things that I think would be really good to do if we're able to right now. Maybe we could just put Scott's number into the lawn mowing.
Okay.
That way, we don't come in next week and say.
What is it?
Maybe four thousand more dollars.
I think I may have done that when you were in there, we were talking.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, Susan, I don't know if we can help you get to a final number for the actual article with health insurance, if we can.
I, I think we did.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
I was, what I was gonna ask you before is that we wanted the final one.
So, hold on, so, so, so I just, I just threw in, was five thousand dollars a bit too much? For cutting grass? Yeah, but you gotta clean up too, so. So that was like the cleanup and everything, that's kind of pretty close to what Scott.
Oh, yeah, you guys twenty at one fifty plus a thousand, you can.
So, you know, Scott was like a couple, it was like eight hundred bucks a month plus fourteen hundred on either end, so that's why I was like, just I put around number of five.
Yes.
I was like, my first, I believe that is showing up twenty fifteen. Five.
Remember that, I, discussion about buying a lawnmower?
Circular. Circular.
Yeah, it's showing up right here, so it's in that budget that we're looking at.
I guess it's more like, wow, it's a property that's just sitting there, it's getting us those five K to do nothing.
Yeah, but we talked about that.
I know. Right, I know.
We talked about it when we.
Sometimes it just sort of slashes. Um.
We no mow.
Just like the beef farm.
No, we can no mow.
Sitting there doing.
For this year, for this year, we might do a no-mow meadow or something too, for this year, let's not have any problems. Um, do you have the new article?
Yeah, so.
Is it four oh four or something?
The total for the article is four oh four one fifty-nine, uh, one sixty, it's, we, we all have the zero zero.
Four oh four one six, it's a total.
To the nearest dollar?
No, it's not to the nearest.
Okay, so then it's four oh four one fifty-nine ninety-six.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Um, and the health insurance number, cause I think we set, we separated.
Is that the reason why it's changing because of the health insurance?
Yes.
Is why it's changed, that's correct. Cause I had three families, it's two families in nineteen ninety.
Yeah, which I think is.
Which I, I am not disagreeing with, it's definitely happening.
Sixty-four eight thirty ninety-six.
Uh. And also, just to wrap up on that article, do we want to keep in or transfer from available funds in the warrant article? Or just say, we'll raise and appropriate.
Say that again, five hundred, yeah?
There's a question for you, do we wanna keep in or transfer from available funds in the warrant article?
I, no, because there are.
No, we don't, we don't, so we'll just delete it.
Raise and appropriate, okay.
It goes back to that whole thing where Donna will advise that you can technically warn people that you wanna raise a hundred thousand dollars and come to town meeting. And on the floor, decide it was coming from free cash or stabilization, or raise and appropriate.
So should these have been with penny amounts too?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Yeah, actually, everything, and I've gotten a little bit better about this, this year and last year, but. Everything on the warrant is in penny amounts, even the special articles, and oftentimes it's zero zero, but I think it's a good form.
Yes, I agree, round.
He just said not round.
You're saying not round, I think it's round.
Penny amounts, we, our accounting system always has.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I heard the opposite, I said they're all pennies, but I'm rounding them, cause I'm like, oh, sure.
We're not rounding.
You know, when you deal like with a big government budget, those rounding errors sometimes are millions. The pennies, so that's why we always.
So always a decimal point.
Always, yeah.
Now, you choose to round or not, but not round here.
Yeah, we've always done it that way. No, we've always done it that way, kids.
You've always rounded?
No, I don't like to round. I don't care.
Alright, anything else?
Much more square than.
Anything else before the finance committee adjourns?
I just wanna know how, how you wanna deal with this, I, I heard enough, I said do this as well as I, I uh.
And that's for, for the tomorrow meeting and for our briefing, is that what you're saying, and the meeting?
Yeah, uh, well, we talked about, I mentioned this at the meeting, that I would write an article for the Monterey. Or to pass out at the meeting, to include on the town, I, I don't, it's high one, use it if, and not number one. First and foremost, just make sure if you read it one more time, cause.
Mm-hmm.
About moving parts, we'll get sure it's still.
And Donna read it? Did Donna?
Donna read it, yeah, and, and once when he threw me out for his wood move, what he wanted, oh, I wanted to go through all.
I, I would just start with the definition of override, override, do you, you know what I mean? People, we have to keep on reminding them what it means, it's like free cash, they think it's free, they don't realize it's been allocated.
So I would say, I mean, there's three ways to go over the two and a half.
Right.
Sentence says the third way to.
But I would just say, an override, as simple as you can, like Wikipedia, override vote.
Well, no, Massachusetts state website, because.
Yeah, exactly. You, I, I was joking, I mean, I. Or like a handbook.
I would put them, put a link to, now actually, well, people won't.
Well, that works well, we could, maybe they have a link, that was a good trick.
I don't know, you can do the link.
But it's always tricky if the.
Well, there's an Massachusetts uh, explaining proposition to half website, and there's videos, have you seen that website, webpage?
Uh, I don't, I've seen so many.
Who, how many people are gonna go watch the videos, I don't know, how people do, so there's this webpage called.
I've seen it.
Proposition to an accountant tax rate process.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the town of Amherst, so it's.
Some of the links I'll put on the finance committees website.
See, here's what Amherst says, and I like it, an override raises the state's limit or the town's limit on how much. They can increase their property taxes, you just need that kind of centering statement, I think, simple about what it is. Right, an override raises the town's limit on how much we can increase our property taxes each year, I would just add that one in.
Okay, where?
Right at the top.
Well, I haven't even identified, why do we have this thing?
But you start, what is an override vote, so you want them to understand this is what an override is and they.
Third sentence, I pretend after this law, I can only cap the annual increasing units of property taxes by the levies during half months, an override.
Mickey, we need you to vote in with this.
I think override allows you to raise.
Chop liver.[1707.81]
We're chopping liver, so. I don't know, I would put it right, I think, I I mean, I'm just telling you, from the questions I got, the people that talk to me, I just think we need to, you know, say. To say an override, you know, definition, I don't know, whatever, an override, wherever you want, but it needs to be in there.
When you first start talking about override, not before anything else.
The town's limit.
What's that?
Before you, when you start talking about overrides.
Right.
The whole, his whole article is is about overrides, so.
But I I think there should be an opening sentence.
It's a sort of a written explanation of where it came from and what it does.
Right, so I would just start with kind of back to uh fourth grade, like the thesis, an override, what is an override? An override uh is a, is is a vote to raise the town's limit on how much. They can, we we or the or the town can increase their property taxes each year, and then go into explaining the history. I just think they need to be grounded, but that's me.
Well, what is. Raise the limit is what throws people off, why do you have to raise the limit?
But that's what you don't want to explain.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand, that's the point.
That's the point, but tell them why we're talking about it, because we're gonna have a vote to raise it, oh, why do you have to raise the limit, and then you explain it. That's what I'm trying trying to say, um. So.
I like it the way Steve has it.
Alright, the the only other thing, yeah, and I I don't think there's a problem with how he has it here, but I did make this. Um, in the second last paragraph, where in the.
My wife stopped us, she said, everything's great, but that paragraph, forget it, I don't have a clue what's.
And what is, yeah. This left the capacity carried forward for futures of fire and sand ground. This amount is very insufficient to pay for fully staffed professional fire department with volunteer support needed as well. Because it's a deck, um, so, yeah, I guess. It might just be confusing because we're not even asking for that amount this year.
Yes.
So you might have to say this amount is very insufficient to pay for this fully staffed professional department with volunteer support needed as well. Given the other strains on our budget or something, would technically, if we hadn't had, if we'd had a zero budget for everything else, it would have been enough.
So I thought that was just paying that whole.
We don't, I mean. Says out, yeah.
This this left the capacity carried forward, the reason why I put it in there, some woman accosted me at the meeting.
Right.
Oh, and what about this, I would get rid of the very.
What came up to me, what is your excess levy capacity?
Oh, I know who that was too. She works for Berkshire Bank.
She should have lived in Monterey.
I shouldn't have lived.
Oh, I didn't get, she said, what is yours, I'm wondering.
Uh.
Not ours.
Alright.
Does she introduce herself, people?
No, she didn't, I I I didn't really have time, I had people asking me questions, but I would have asked her, you know, what's your point? But she wanted to know what excess levy capacity was, I ended up dumping it in here.
I like everything else, I'm just dyslexic, so I need like a file cabinet, which is an override vote is, but the rest, you get it? Um, I like the last sentence very much, very strong.
That is the next thing that we all have to agree to, and I mean, sometimes the Monterey News wants to know. Are you speaking for yourself or are you speaking for the committees, and that's why I would tell them I am speaking with approval, this is.
Yeah.
With approval of both committees.
And I might say both the select board, I might say it again, it's like what they're, both the select board and the finance committee are asking, I would agree.
Yeah.
Instead of they.
Instead of they, say both, that's it, yeah, just name them both, I mean.
Both.
Okay.
Both the select board and the finance committee. So show, we're not.
Yeah, there.
Yes, but uh. Justin, but he's not. He hasn't participated in the meeting.
It doesn't matter, he's a voting member, so we, the vote, yeah, like.
But he has to vote himself, so.
If we were still.
Yeah, there's like order. Can be a majority, even if it's not unanimous.
Correct, that's what I would say.
And the the, yeah, the big change I made was I took out the whole two thirds vote.
Right.
I took out the town meeting vote.
Right.
It's not, that's not here.
The votes have to be two thirds, right?
No, only half, and the two thirds is for genetic inclusion.
Or stabilization, stabilization with all, I think it's two thirds.
Just say.
This is, I'm kind of surprised, this does not.
I I know, I'm surprised.
Yeah, and the only other thing I might take out is that word barely.
Yeah, yeah.
You say it's insufficient.
Yeah, okay.
I like the word in.
I'm sorry.
She likes.
I'm like.
Don't put that in, no, don't put that, and then, do you wanna quote what's an override vote, or do you wanna quote, why does Monterey need an override vote?
I think it's more about explaining.
Okay.
Both the understanding what we need and like.
Yeah, I know.
Or you could say, what is an override vote, and why do we need one this year?
Yeah, exactly, or a subhead, subhead.
And why do we need one?
Why do you come to Monterey?
Yes. Hoping it'll go viral with that, huh? No, but I, I mean, you know, people, remember, Steve, you competed with, I saw a blue jay in my backyard four times. Do you know what I think?
I had six of them, I got.
See, you hear what I'm saying?
I'm like a ghoulish, you can't go with.
I'd rather read about that, an override, wait, there are birds, who would read?
Bluebird, yeah, bluebirds haven't shown up yet, they're all over in his house, and I'm trying to get them to come, I'm putting down.
It's all the blue jays.
Now, I'm reporting, sure, I do have.
Alright, birding, birding is tomorrow night.
Alright.
On my title, there's one overriding, why does Monterey need one this year?
Thank you, Steve. Yes, perfect.
And then I'm gonna take out the very.
And then say, oh.
We're gonna leave in the five hundred and ten thousand.
I would carry forward.
Sure. I would, number important, and then, basically, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna unconvene, Steve and I'll go in the hallway and just look at dates. And then Roger will talk to you, but we'll include something like this victorial somehow in our finance committee briefing.
Well, yeah, that would be the question, do you wanna make it available at tomorrow's meeting, or. You would ask me to speak to what I know about.
I I hope you will, and I really do.
And I, are you gonna, can you come too?
What time?
At seven.
Seven o'clock, I'm pretty sure, so, I I wouldn't read this, I would do something, and then just try to ask.
No, but just.
But the only thing you could give it out in the other briefing.
And I think what you said, when you stood up and explained, was perfect at the other briefing. I just, it's nice for it to come from someone besides everything.
I would put it in the Monterey, oh, can't go in the Monterey news.
I will, that depends when she gets it out.
Shannon told me she might try to get, might try to get it out.
Before.
Right before the first.
They usually do try to do that, which is.
So I would, I would say, we could, once we get, I would do it for the um finance committee briefing, so you keep this focused on, like, what is the fire department and why it's important, and then tie it into the whole. I mean, you still have to talk about it, but I wouldn't.
I would definitely submit it to the Monterey News.
But I wouldn't give out something at this briefing, we'd give out at the last weekend.
Okay, we're not gonna give it out, any other place you wanna post it, like, um.
Yes, so.
Don't you have to?
I think.
We posted it at, uh, do we wanna post it at the roadside?
What's that?
Well, I would.
The warrant?
The warrant or the uh?
Well, what I was gonna say is.
Not the warrant.
I would hopefully submit it to Monterey News, and then we can have another discussion, we should definitely do some version of it for the finance committee briefing, and that will be posted online. And then there's a question about, do we wanna send something out, usually I would send the finance committee briefing out to that Monterey Google group. Or something like that, and Roger can post that statement on the finance, we can adopt it and post it on the finance page of of the finance committee.
Okay, if you wanna have it available as a handout, if anybody wants, I wouldn't pass this.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine, anyway.
As somebody that has a lot of questions about it, just hand it.
Ask the.
I have a handout if you want.
I like it.
Okay, tomorrow, you say, if you're interested, I have a handout, don't just hand it out.
Yeah.
That's better.
No, I have the ten things you need to know again.
I still have one.
Alright, we're gonna leave our.
Alright.
We'll have to look at it. We gave you three minutes, you like fast.
Just keep adding.
I just have a question for you guys, on your budget briefing.
Yeah.
Do you, are you gonna want that recorded or not, or are you just gonna?
I think we should record it if we can, you're gonna do a report, we could.
Well, I can create, I can, it's at the library, right?
That's our library.
So we can, we can do it on, go at a meeting or something.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and I have a thing with that.
Uh, the library has its own.
Yeah, we're getting ready to go to the next function.
Excuse me, finance committee and Roger, uh, I know you have the the meeting on the twenty fourth posted on the town website, but you wanna put it on the library?
Yes.
But it's not on there.
Oh, okay.
You gotta do it in a van.
Oh, I can do it, I still didn't, okay, I'll go to the library, Mickey told me that on Saturday, I.
I told you that.
On Saturday, and I forgot, that was two Saturdays ago. Right?
We bet you did a couple of times.
Life happens. Yeah, alright, I'll put that up and I'll get out of the library.
That's so easy, I'm I'm amazed, I'm in awe of what you've done, so I appreciate your work, Roger.
And we appreciate you guys, because we didn't need those two towns, cause we were arguing the whole time.
No, but even I'm blessed for you to put a process.
I know.
I know.
I'm just, I'm not gonna stop appreciating a positive working environment or.
It's incredible, I I would continue to appreciate it every single time.
No, okay, my work, my work is done here, I'm.
Alright, thanks, you're sorry about that, Mickey, I'm like, must be getting. Oh, and Roger, can you talk to all my neighbors?
No, no, I got.
Just maybe I have changes to it.
Yeah, well, it's nice, right?
I think we're in good shape.
So, um, the only thing we have to do.
I know, it's one of those, yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, we have a meeting with uh Lysan, um, from the bull farm about their parking lot. So they're they're working on putting a parking lot behind it on the road, uh, just down the street from uh, that's what we're there for.
Oh, yeah, what?
Because you drove by.
And and I asked, I asked the surveyor, but he said, I just told him, I should have.
No, we're just in the space there, that that's where they're gonna have a parking lot, I think they said s- eight spaces or something, eight spaces they're gonna put up there.
So that space right where you went in for the well.
Yep, right in there.
Good place.
Yep, so we're, they're trying, because because they're gonna be uh trying to fix up the uh, um, one thing they'll have to do is uh drainage down down the street there, down the road. Um, we may have, we may have to put no parking on that side road, just going up the road there, up your swan road there. On the right there, we may put no parking there, because there'll be rip rap, all sorts of stuff, we don't want people to drive.
Drainage to allow that.
Yeah, so there'll be, yeah, there'll be a culvert driveway across.
Uh, they gotta be working on that drainage on the whole road there, or from my driveways down.
I don't know.
I don't know if that would come on.
I don't know on your side, I don't think that's part of the plan.
But there's not usually near that eight cars parked up there.
There's been, they've gone all the way to the top of the road.
It's it's not, it's not just the cars, it's the fact that they they don't know they're standing in a road, and they stand there with the doors open and talking, and I'm coming down. And I really don't like to beat my horn, but yeah, I could run them all over, I think, oh, I could get three of them.
Mickey, don't.
But uh.
It's all die, it's all die.
So so it's good, so I I was out there, it was myself and Pete Wilson, um, Chief Fagie was out there, we're talking about safety and. And trying to maybe figure out ways to make it safer on the opposite side of the road, look people like park, and they may, they may just try and uh. Be more aggressive, more aggressive, more active about putting their uh staff party across the street there, stop people from parking across the street, so that was pretty well. That one, that was a good conversation, um. I got a new piece of hardware for the owl and everything, I made some new uh, 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 I got rid of the laptop, so there's, got that, so no more complaints.
What is it, right?
It's actually, there's a little tiny desktop, a little tiny computer right there, below it on the left hand side, it's the same thing, it's the same thing as this, a little different.
Oh, it's just a little black box.
Yep, yep, so I put some, I put some uh directions over there, it's pretty easy, pops pops right on.
So that TV monitors and screen. And uh, next, we'll get Zoom.
Yep. Yes.
I mean, we've always wanted something.
No, I mean, I do, I check myself, cause we've been talking about it for four years.
Yeah, I know.
It'll be, it'll be, it actually, it kind of, Zoom's a lot better, um, I I have a question from Pete Wilson, currently, um, about taking the truck. So Jim used to take the the truck home, the one time truck home, um, Pete is asking. If it's okay for him to take it home, for basically the same reasons, to be on call, to come in. Um, I don't know if there's anything insurance wise that we would have to do, but I just told him I would ask the board and uh, see what their thoughts are.
I think if you were asking the Department, they should have the same right to. I don't have a problem.
Okay.
My understanding, you know, with police chiefs and Department of Highway or or people that usually take vehicles for that reason, so. I think if we wanted to manage, we have to give them the same tools.
I I think my my only other thought, and just to add, is that, um, do we. We need to start thinking about how we're handling position over the longer shoot.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um. So I think we're kind of, and I think you're right, and I think we're also in kind of a limbo.
Yeah, we are.
That we can't do much about, so. But I. Yeah, I think I agree with Frank. It's probably the least that we can do, given what he's, the role that he's been serving, kind of unexpectedly, and, yeah, alright.
Yeah.
I'll uh, I'll probably, I'll I'll talk to him about that. And um, another thing, I was uh, um, um, one of the uh. Like Gary Thomas down at the transfer station called up and asked about Easter, whether the transfer station was gonna be closed on Easter. And my first, um, my first reaction was no, because it's not a um, not a holiday, it's not a holiday in Massachusetts. And. I think last year they did close on Easter, because he was like, so, we're gonna be open on Tuesday?
I think we always close on Easter.
But. It's not a a holiday.
And it's not a holiday listed in our.
So. So, I mean, if they don't come into work. And they're not gonna come into work, and the place is closed because they're not coming to work, it's not a holiday.
Wait, so.
It's the, it's the, the next day, Patriot's Day is a holiday, the twenty first.
I think the reason. It's probably not a holiday is because it's always on Sunday. Well, so if it if it's a federal holiday.
It's not.
No, but I'm saying, when something is a federal holiday, if it happened on the weekends, you get a weekday off.
Yes.
I think Easter would be, except that it's always on Sunday, so you don't need.
Apparently, we 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 brought this up when we were talking to Ryan from, who's the chief of the fire department in Lee. Um, and they don't choose a holiday, even though they're twenty four seven, because it's not considered a national holiday.
Well, it's not, it's not a.
It's a religious.
It's a religious holiday, I mean, I could point out that so is Christmas, and that's a holiday, that's a whole other question.
I don't think it should be, but that's okay.
Um, but, be that as it may, the question is, when we have staff, we, like, they may choose to shes not gum, right, and then it's kind of more convenient to.
So.
Have our people think it's open when it isn't.
So I I could talk to Sheldon.
Well, what's previously happened, we were closed last year, I can't ever imagine that we were open on Easter.
I I think they just. I I don't know, there's lots of people that don't celebrate Easter.
No, there are, but it's like, it's like Christmas, like, yes, it is a religious holiday for a specific religion, and yet.
More people know Christmas at least.
But you'll know that most things are closed.
Pardon, more people know Christmas than know Easter. Especially, especially since Easter changes every year.
So I I I don't know how long Gary's, Gary's only been working there like through one Easter, so, and they just, they did it last year.
What did Sheldon say?
They worked it last year or?
No, they they were closed last year, yeah. I I haven't.
Yeah, but did they make up the day or?
Well, if you.
No, they came, yeah, they they came in on Tuesday.
Oh, really? So then they're open Tuesday.
I would do that, what I would do is, you close and you just say, we're open on Saturday, if you have.
Well, extend the hours on Saturday and close on Monday.
No, I'll I'll talk to Sheldon, because if Sheldon, if Sheldon could be there, I'd rather just have it open.
Okay, that's fine.
What are the hours of?
Eight eight uh, ten, ten to six.
No, I think it went four during the winter.
It's not, it's past, it's past the daylight savings.
No, we we changed that, we changed that.
We changed it to Memorial Day.
It it doesn't, it's Memorial Day.[1611.51] It, it doesn't, it's Memorial Day now.
You changed it to Memorial Day. Is there already going to extend it hours?
I have to double check, I thought, I thought it changed, did it?
It's Memorial Day.
I guess that makes more sense, because it makes it easier to, to keep track of.
World Day's Labor Day, right?
Yeah, this is great, this one, it's, all federal holidays are non-religious, other than Christmas Day.
Yeah, Sunday before is Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, Sunday before, so, until the Sunday before Memorial Day, what's Memorial Day?
Uh, last week of May.
Monday, Monday.
Okay, yeah, so it's a short, so it's short. So it's only.
I, I've talked to Sheldon, but Sheldon will work and keep it open, but if.
If you want.
Close it, then I would extend hours on Saturday. I don't see you opening on Tuesday than Wednesday.
No, Tuesday, Wednesday is Tuesday.
No, it wouldn't open Tuesday.
Wouldn't open Tuesday.
But Monday's open, right?
Oh, Sunday is not open till Wednesday. If we keep it, if we want, I don't have a problem with extending hours on Saturday, they want to.
I'll talk to Sheldon.
And I think, put it on blast, whatever it is, if we're open, let people know, hey, we're open, actually go and use it, because I think otherwise you might.
Right, no, but you're not there, yeah.
The ghost town, and if we're not open, uh, let people know in advance, it can come Saturday.
That is a good idea.
Alright, I'll talk to Sheldon.
Okay.
That's a funny one.
I know.
I was very, I was like, what? He's like, well, I'm cooking for the family.
She's got one thousand.
Yeah.
One thousand and front.
Um, that, that's it.
Do we have any minutes? We didn't.
No, sorry.
That's okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm happy to go in there.
And next week we have to send over, right?
Yes. Um, it's getting simpler and simpler, because we have that basically squared away the, the override stuff. And we don't need to do anything on opioids. And I'm gonna see if Donna can go to the planning board meeting Thursday, and they can just figure that out, because it's their thing. So I think we're.
And then the only thing left is the, the numbers for, uh.
Yeah, it's weird. Which I think Donna just, rightfully so, was like, you can't just spend money on whatever you want, but I think our consultant has said, you can spend money on whatever you want. And they're called unrestricted funds, so.
So I'll go through and make changes that we just made in the budget, I'll make changes on this.
Just do it in your thing and pull it at the last minute.
Yep, yes.
Just in case. Make, make the changes in, in the budget.
Yep.
And then pull it.
Yep.
From there.
Yep, I'll do that.
You told me it's easy to copy.
It took like an hour and a half.
Yeah, it did find easy.
It wasn't that bad.
It took an hour and a half, but then this time it wouldn't take an hour and a half.
Yeah, it's, it's, and with, with, it's the, um, it doesn't.
All I know is, I tried to copy it, and I was like, no, this is not working, I'll ask Roger.
It, it's not hard, it doesn't take, it really doesn't take long.
You'll figure out how it.
Wasn't take long is always a question.
Yeah, because you gotta go through and you gotta reformat it up, it doesn't, it doesn't reform back, everything is the same. Doesn't do it. Maybe an hour, I can get.
Well, then, but I didn't realize that.
Well, I'll figure out, you just, you just tell me what, I'll, I'll take care of it, don't you worry.
Don't you worry your little head.
Don't you worry, you can go ahead. Just, all I need is the, what would be the, um, the final, the final of all the articles.
Well, you and I are gonna figure it out.
So like, once, once you finish your piece, for the, for the, all the warrant articles, I just will stick mine, I'll just.
Oh my God, the letter. We signed it.
We did?
Yeah, we signed it, you gave it.
No, 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 for this.
The cover letter.
The cover letter.
No, I know, I thought about, so, it's basically, there's not a whole lot going on.
Like, they're talking about last year.
So many things, um, we were buying some trucks and stuff, you know, it's, and they're used to now these idea of paying additional prin- principal pay down.
Right.
So we don't really explain that, the fire, I mean, the fire stuff is the story, you know, right? And then, a lot of it's straightforward, the community center thing gets a little bit complicated, but it's hard to uncomplicate it, other than just to say, we're taking money from these. I'm not, I'd like to do a letter, I think. But a lot of it's self-explanatory, and it's not a long work, it's gonna be, even with the budget in it, it's gonna be like,
Well, this is ten pages.
Is that what, ten pages? Oh, I took the eighty news stuff, I'll have one I'm looking at.
Oh, okay.
Um, I mean, but ten isn't.
Isn't a lot?
Reason, well, compared to some that I've seen, that were forty articles, four, four pages of it.
Okay, that's the point.
We, we can do, four pages, no, we can do a cover letter, um, we just need to put it together, and we just need to decide what we're tackling in the cover, cover letter.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two, one, so yeah, half of the forty, whatever.
Yeah, um, I mean, that was an insane year, but, uh, we just, we need to decide. I think I would speak to the fact that we're combining some, some lines in, in the warrant.
And also that we moved some things from special articles in the operating budget.
Yes, that was true. If Roger prepares it, then we can all comment on it.
That's too lucky.
Yay. Yeah, and just, like I said, if you send me.
Wait. Uh, never mind. I just get confused by the different merges, I'm like, we're doing zero for fire department equipment?
Yeah, but that's what I was gonna ask everybody, if you just kind of go down through and look at some of what might be the merges and things like that. I initially thought, well, I would just put in bold those places where, like, say for example, select board expenses, FY twenty-six includes cart, I was thinking of making FY twenty-six includes cart bold. But then I was like, hmm. Just to kind of point out to people that, that's what I see.
We'll figure out some, we'll figure out in the next, like, a way to just kind of tip people off, and we'll mention it in the cover letter.
Okay, items that have been merged, uh, items moved into operating budget.
Roger.
Mm-hmm.
From special articles.
Do you want it on that page four of this?
Interesting.
Yep. Can you move that to the top?
Because I, I can, we can figure out.
Yeah, put that on top of that, because you got, you're down there, because that's supposed to be up there.
Yeah.
Professional. Fire department. I mean, I don't want to diss them by saying they're not professional, but I. I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
I think they would even say that, that they're going to a professional, it's a paid professional service.
And then, I think I will try to explain the community center.
Yep.
Uh, article.
Center article.
And the historic district, and just that they were article projects.
There were some people, well, I was talking to someone today, and there was some confusion on our, on the Saturday, um, briefing. Some people were a little confused on some of the numbers, and they were hoping that maybe there had been, there could be some explanation as to what's going on. I thought we explained that at years two and three, or years two, five, whatever.
Do you know what, what numbers I learned that?
You know that sheet, there was one, there was one page, there, there was one, um, image, uh, whatever, sheet, that, um.
FY twenty-six and then FY twenty-seven.
Yeah. That, I think there was, I think people were, like, expecting to know at the end of the day what it would all look, look like.
And I, I think that, that after Frank and I have talked about this a bunch of times, the word means especially that I, people want, like, I don't want to say what that's ultimately gonna look like, because we're in the process of trying to create shared services, and if I tell them one thing, and then I'm gonna come back and say, oh, but hey, we're gonna do this instead, but I think we're in the process of trying to figure out where it should go. And I know it's gonna end up costing more, but I'm not, I don't want to say what that is, or even try to calculate it, like, I looked at the EGRM thing, where they're calculating out like ten years, and I'm like, you, people are crazy, like.
Yeah, but don't be out of the office.